All right, good morning. Glad you could all gather here today. It is 11:03 on November the 16th, and we are convening into work session regarding items for presentation to discussion that have been previously posted. We do not have any citizen comments this morning. So we will move from Agenda Item 1 straight to Agenda Item 2, and we will begin with 2.1, which is Council Priorities. Then we will move to our legislative agenda, at which time we will recess into lunch, and then come back for executive session, and then our regularly scheduled council meeting. All right, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Atkinson, for 2.1 and 2.2.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Good morning. We're going to try to wrap up these two items. I apologize, I was keyed up to do the legislative first, but we'll get caught up here. Okay. I'll tell you what, you already have your handouts in front of you for the legislative agenda, so if you would grab that. Also, watch the screen. We're going to run through the legislative agenda, and then we'll jump over and do the council priorities. Just real quick, this is a follow-up to your planning session. All discussion and work session, any changes that you might wish to make, additions, deletions, staff will make those, and then when it comes back to your regular session this afternoon, you will have the final document that you can consider for approval. Reminder, you've got the state legislative agenda, there are three broad categories. You have the federal legislative agenda, which has one category on it. Once we're finished today, or if we have to push to a following meeting, we can. This is our legislative agenda, especially as we start the session for the state in January. So, jumping right into it, the first category are those items which the council might choose to initiate. That means we would seek one of our delegation to prepare and to file a bill. The one that is in this category is efforts to allow the city an option, not a mandate, an option to adopt the vacant building and minimum maintenance standard authority allowed for other municipalities. This is from our prior session. This was not something ultimately that we were able to move. My suggestion would be for the council to quickly discuss, do you want to move this? Don't give up on the item, but I'm just not sure that seeking it is going to be real positive. If we can get other cities through the legislature to do this, it's easy to come on top of that, and that would cause us to move this item into your will support category. So, Mr. Massengale, Ms. Joy, Ms. Patterson-Harris are familiar with this, we did it one session ago. With that, Mayor, I'll stop.
Are you in agreement to move this to will support? Any discussion of that? And I also believe we have Ms. Martinez-Garcia with us as well at this time. All right. Any further discussion? All right.
Okay, we'll move into now the more broad of the three categories.
Sorry, Mr. Atkinson, I believe Mr. McBrayer has a question.
Is this working? Okay, okay, all right. Could you just go over what the minimum maintenance standards authority is, just a little bit?
This is a piece of bracketed legislation in state law. It was really put in originally to accommodate San Antonio's efforts to redevelop downtown in and around the Riverwalk area. The minimum standards are developed locally, but these are things like in a certain zone of your city, a commercial property that is vacant. If it were to lose the front glass on the building, you could, you don't have to, but you could require the owner to come in and put glass back in rather than to board the building. Could apply to exterior lighting. It's a valid argument that you can be putting a handicap on private property. What San Antonio did very successfully was they set aside city dollars, and they said, "Okay, Mr. or Mrs. Commercial Property Owner, the facade of your building has to remain as if it were an occupied structure, and by the way, we have some grant funds to help you for a determinate period of time, two years, three years, something to that effect." The cities that have this, the standards are all different.
And so is this only for commercial property, or for all property?
This one has typically been applied to commercial properties.
Right.
The, go ahead.
And on a zone basis, you have to zone off the area?
Yes, they're geographically based.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. McBrayer.
This came up last session and had a lot of opposition to it because of exactly what city managers said, and that is, every city does it differently. If you're going to have it, it needs probably to be more defined, so probably moving it into support is going to work a whole lot better than trying to initiate, because you've got too many cities. Some were totally opposed to it at all, and some, well, they wanted their little tweaks, and so I think support would be better.
All right, any further questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer, Ms. Joy. All right, moving on, thank you. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you. When this comes back this afternoon in your regular session, that item will be in your will support category. So now let's jump into will support. This is the broadest category that you have. I'll go quickly, so stop me on the items that are not italicized, and then I will stop and go in more detail on the italicized items. Starting off, your Interstate 27 expansion project, including capital, so if there are dollars to move through the legislature, this would put the council in a position to jump on into support. Same thing with ensuring that TechDoc continues to fund Loop 88. Lubbock Power and Lights' efforts to enter the competitive market for retail electric power provider choice, that's a mouthful. We do think they may have some adjustments that they need to make legislatively. LPNL will seek to have those done. This would put the council in a position to support it. The first italicized, this is an item that has been on the legislative deck for many years, and it is allowing cities, and you'll see it for counties and special districts and school districts, the option to use either your official newspaper, your newspaper of record, or a website to publish legal notices. This is in TML's legislative agenda. It has been in their agenda for a long time. I would say that this item slowly becomes more possible, but likely still not there. Would also note that if the legislature were to pass this and give us the option, the city's charter spells out newspaper of record. So for Lubbock, it'd still be a two-step if it were to go through the legislature. Just like was called out in the last item, there's a lot of people that will be for, and there will be people obviously that are against, but this is an addition, so any thoughts on that? Maybe any opposition to putting it in there, where to start?
Yeah. Mr. Atkinson, I think we're moving that way in the future. Again, not sure if this is going to happen in the next few sessions, but with cost rising on publication, I think it's, in my mind, something we support, but it's a will support Any other comments? All right, we'll move on, thank you.
Okay, continuing on will support. Rules from the Texas Controller related to destination sales tax sourcing. This is the continued effort to fully implement Representative Burrows, what we call the Wayfair Bill. So this is the collection of sales tax on online purchases. In Texas, historically, sales tax was collected at origination, so think of a very large retail warehouse that is in whatever Georgetown. Somebody in Lubbock orders from that warehouse, the sales tax goes to Georgetown. The Wayfair Bill that Chairman Burrows did, and a lot of the effort from the Controller says, no, destination's probably a better way to do it. There have been lawsuits filed, all cities, based on their local condition, will see it differently. This is not an item that TML will weigh in upon. It's also one that cannot be 100% analyzed, just because of how sales tax works in the background. Staff still suggest to you that it is in Lubbock's benefit, even with the new warehouses we have here, to be a destination state. We're not asking to join lawsuits, we're not asking to file bills, just as the Controller moves his efforts forward, we would like to be in a position to support. Next one, sales tax refund and reallocation process. This is a very mathematical thing that goes on in the background. So a retailer in Lubbock collects sales tax both for the state, the county, the city, LIDA, and it all goes to the Controller, magic happens behind the scenes, and we get a number back. We would like to see the backside of that process. The next one, removing minimum sales thresholds. Part of the online sales tax deal, it has a carve-out for very small providers. There's been an effort afoot to say, no, providers should be the same, whether they're brick and mortar, whether they're large or they're small, and that's what this one is. Final one on this page. It is very hit and miss when you talk about the marketplace providers for things such as VRBO, Airbnb, whether they will collect the local hot. They do collect on behalf of the state. Historically, for the majority of Texas cities, they will not collect the local piece, and it puts your local providers on a different playing field than your local hotels. If somebody can push something through, we think it is to the benefit, really, of the folks that own those properties, and to the cities, that there be a single point of collection. It's not adding a tax, it's just how it comes in. Questions on this page?
All right, moving on.
Okay, continuing. Police reform initiatives that are subject to local approval by duly elected governing bodies. This was in their last session, and council, remember, the climate was much different with what was going on with police reform throughout the country. This is saying if something does come through, it still needs to be subject to this city council. Chapter 143, Local Government Code, this is civil service. For the police and the fire chiefs, authority and personnel matters, that has been a longstanding item on your agenda. Inclusion of larger municipal fire departments in matters before the Texas Commission on Fire Protection Board. That board writes standards that ultimately are implemented across the state, but the board does not have representation from your larger fire departments, and we think they should do so.
If any unknown person attempts to give you any item, including luggage to transport on your flight, do not accept it, and notify airline personnel immediately.
It sounds like an airline announcement.
I'm sorry, I thought I put it on mute.
Okay, please, council, closely control your luggage from this point, I'm sorry. Efforts to ensure the cities can manage all utility installation within city rights of way, including market-based rates. Number one, this is just our ability to say, an installation in our right-of-way needs to be in a proper place. It's not saying, no, you cannot have it. It is also that all the providers in your rights of way should be treated the same in terms of what they pay as franchise fees. Expansion of broadband availability in state and federal funding, that's been in there, I actually trimmed it down, because we know now that the state broadband development office has come into a tremendous amount of funding, and they need to get moving. Questions on this one?
All right, moving on.
Okay, getting into a couple of new ones. Still on will support, the italicized one, funding for Texas Tech University, Texas Tech Veterinary School, Texas Tech Mental Health Institute, including dedicated funding such as the Puff or other state sources. This follows on to some stuff that happened after the last legislative session. Our local delegation, I think, made a good start on it, suggests that the council needs to be in a position to support that if they can get it moving. Full funding for Texas Recreation Parks Account Grant Program, that is the funding that the Parks and Wildlife Department has that comes from a set aside in the sporting goods sales tax, and it doesn't always all make it into that account. Council, what you did last meeting to pass your Park Master Plan makes you eligible for that funding, we would like for it to be there. We continue to support the state fully restoring its funding for mental health treatment, also to create and fund programs addressing chronic homelessness.
Mr. Atkinson, spec up to funding for mental health, Ms. Joy has a question.
Yeah, full restoration doesn't tell me anything. What I really think we're looking for is not only restoration, but increasing funding for mental health. I think restoration might not get us anywhere.
Good point. So maybe that would read, full restoration and increased, increased state funding for mental health treatment.
Yes, thank you.
Council good with that?
I'm good with that, and also, I think that's been acknowledged by our state representatives that they are actively looking for additional funding. I think they're in support of that as well, so I feel comfortable with that.
Final item on this page, efforts to add municipal parks, city parks, as a use for hot funding, subject to local approval. This one caught us by surprise in the last session. A legislator from central Texas filed a bracket bill that included Lubbock. It was not in our legislative agenda, it was handled by the mayor's committee. It did not go very far. I don't think this is something we would seek, but if it were to come up again, as long as the eligibility was based on local approval, I don't see how it would be a bad thing. This might be our final page of this. Also, an effort coming through the Texas Municipal League is promoting pay-as-you-go financing for capital investments by creating another property tax rate that is, that works the way your debt service rate works. So kind of that gap between things that can't be funded in the current year's budget, but you could collect towards it for a year or two without penalizing yourself on your tax rate. Not sure there's going to be a lot of appetite at the legislature, but I do think there's going to be efforts to push it, and if it appears that it's being done in the correct manner, would be something we could support. Next one is meaningful amendments to the equity appraisal statute, such as closing the dark store theory for appraisal. In the past, we also had some language about sales price disclosure, that is a non-starter. Some really big groups got together and made a hard run at that last time. The sales price disclosure is not going to happen. How appraisals actually work, though, there are continued efforts to work on the appraisal districts and how they do things. So the dark store theory, in effect, takes a commercial property that at the moment of appraisal was not income-producing, and knocks down its value significantly. What that really does is shift a small portion of a tax burden back over to residential and over to occupied structures, so it is an equity appraisal issue. The next one, a little different, because this is for school districts, but what are called the Chapter 313 tax abatements died, they didn't meet their reauthorization in the last session. Leadership, both in the Senate and the House, has said, yeah, we need to get this back up and put them, put them in place in some form. As we look at very large capital economic development projects in our community, this is very important. So for example, your La Prino project was one of the last that came in under 313 before it expired. So if they move with this, we need to stand behind them. Specific language for the Texas Veterans Land Board related to cemeteries for our veterans. This council has already put on the table 100 acres of city-owned land for a veteran cemetery. You're going to see similar language in your federal agenda later. Finally, this is one that was added, you have not seen this one. Efforts to enhance public safety, workers' compensations, lifetime benefit coverage for line-of-duty traumatic head injuries. This was, again, added late, so you've not seen it. We have an unfortunate example of that here in Lubbock, with what happened to our police officer and to our firefighters. That came out in our favor, but the statute that is behind this is in bad shape. And there's a, there's a specific piece in the Labor Code just for public safety, just for line-of-duty injuries, and they've tried to fix it, the legislature has tried to fix it, and tried to fix it, and it gets Christmas tree. You start out trying to fix some extremely poor language on head injuries, and it just gets off into the deal. I have met and visited with our local fire association, this is top of the list for them, asked our fire chief to review this, we're asking that you consider also having this as a will support.
Any other questions, comments? All right, moving on.
Okay, we're into Category 3 on the legislative agenda. These have not changed, so oppose limiting municipal participation in the legislative process and the ability to hire representatives with public dollars. New limits on city authority, including additional appraisal or revenue caps or lowered rollback requirements. New limits on the use or calculation involving certificates of obligation. Limits on home rule authority, Lubbock is a home rule municipality, or local control. These are broad, they're longstanding, they will also match mostly with what you see in the TML legislative items. Continuing, again, the majority of this list, we've had in there for a while. Preemption or super preemption is related to land development. There have been some big super preemption bills that ultimately did not make it. They start out with what appears to be a logical debate, and by the time they make it through the process, the kitchen sink has been added. We're not asking for less, we're just saying we don't need more. Increased pass-throughs that the cities collect on behalf of the state, we do collect quite a few of those. Your easiest example is next door, it's municipal court. Removal of original jurisdiction for utility rate-making proceedings, so council, probably early next year, our local natural gas providers will come forward with their rate cases that affects all of our consumers. Current law says the city council has first crack at that original jurisdiction. Ultimately, it ends up, generally, these would be at the Railroad Commission, but some at the Public Utility Commission. We like and support the state and regional water planning and flood planning processes. I do not think that they are in danger by any stretch, and I think it's something we would stand behind. The Event Trust Fund Program, this is a deal where you'll generally see it coming through Market Lubbock and the Lubbock Sports Authority. They've been able to bring in, you know, a large athletic tournament. The one that's about to happen is the Falconers Convention, and what the Event Trust Fund Program does is it allows us to collect a portion of the state's sales tax back to local, and where that money goes is right back into the sports authority or into visit Lubbock to secure more events. We've been very successful with it. I signed two of them this week. The final one, this is a new one. We were not aware that things were headed this way until late in the summer, and those are potential efforts to abolish the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. I think there's going to be a legislative front on this, but there is already a legal front on this. There are suits filed against College Station. It's pretty interesting to read them, they've not gone far yet, but they will. And just for the record, Lubbock has minimal regulation in the ETJ. We have not pushed it or stretched it, we have minimal. But some of what is being talked about would be removing it. So these are those things that will happen literally immediately on the other side of your city limit lines, that logically someday you're going to inherit. Questions on that? We're almost...
Ms. Joy has a question.
I'm concerned that we don't have the one on here where TML, at least the last meeting that I went to, was going to initiate for purposes of annexation, where the, where you had to be contiguous, and they were going to move that to the middle of the road. Do you recall that, Jarrett?
Yes, ma'am, linear annexation.
Yeah, which for Lubbock would just create a hopscotch-type situation, which would not be good. So in my role as Region 3 Director, I've told them that Lubbock will oppose that, because normally with Texas Municipal League, if there are cities that oppose, and some are for, they just take no position. And this one, as far as I know, they are still saying that they would initiate that, and that was based on a city totally unlike Lubbock. I understand their problem, but this would create a real problem for Lubbock, so I think we need to add that.
What's your understanding of that at this point? Was there any talk of that coming in? Do we know where we are, not just from a TML perspective, but from, have y'all looked in that or discussed that as a staff?
Councilmember Joy and I have discussed it, I've discussed it with a couple of folks at TML, as well as with a small group of city managers. The request is coming from a city that's landlocked, and their way to continue to grow is to basically skip a piece in the middle by going down the center of an existing roadway, and then annexing vacant land on the other side of it. It's pretty specific the way it's proposed. I believe councilmember you and I have a follow-up visit with TML, not next week, but week after. Perhaps if the council wants to put something on there, we could write language similar to will oppose, changes to annexation authority that are not in the benefit of the city of Lubbock. I don't know what the specifics are going to be that comes out of that TML deal, and I would hate to be too focused. It may come out that, okay, yeah, we can live with that, or it may not.
My proposition would be if council's okay with this, is let's, let's go ahead, move forward with what we have at this point, and then let's let that continue with investigation, and then if we need to add, we can always add that back in, even in January if we need to, or in a later meeting.
You can, and I didn't put the preamble up on the screen today, I think everybody's had a chance to read it, but the preamble says, if something changes, the mayor, on his authority, with another council member, I think it's two other council members, can adapt this as we go. The legislative process is very slow in January, by the time you hit April, it's moving with 30 minutes' notice, and that's why that's in there.
Is everybody good with that?
I think so, because we don't know what other annexation bills may come up between now and then.
So we'll leave that open and respond as appropriate.
Correct. All right. Congressional?
Okay, we've jumped into the congressional. These are all support. To my knowledge, in a very long time, the city has not initiated federal action. We have a very good relationship with our congressman, so these are things where we can go to him and say, yes, we support that item. Funding for mass transportation, that is city bus. Funding for highway systems, that is everything. Funding for the Texas portion of the Ports to Plains Corridor, being the expansion of I-27 north and south of Lubbock. That's actually moving, it's not moving quickly, but it is moving, so we need to keep our foot on it. Continued funding for community development block grant and home partnership programs. This is your community development department. Funding up until COVID had slowly been declining, dollars were moved into other areas. There's a lot of money in them right now. As the next Congress convenes, somebody will think that's a way to fund a different program. It benefits our community directly. Next, in fact, the next two, these are added. Funding for the United States Department of Veteran Affairs to create, operate, and maintain veteran cemeteries. This is directly related to the Texas Veterans Land Board discussion. We came very close to getting that cemetery funded, this time through the feds. We need to be in line, we need to keep pressure on that, we need to get it funded, and then the state will take it over and run it as the plan, basically. Final one, this is also an addition. Efforts, including through the AAAE, that stands for the American Association of Airport Executives, to ensure that the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, provides airports and municipal fire departments with protections from circla liability related to A3F, aqueous firefighting foam. Council, you're all familiar with what's going on at the former Reese Air Force Base with PFAS. The ironic thing about PFAS is today, there's not a, there's not what they call a maximum contaminant limit, an MCL, there is not a defined, okay... contaminant limit, an MCL, there is not a defined, okay, PFAS is dangerous at this point, but below it, it's not. Environmental Protection Agency is going full steam ahead to get that defined, and it's going to come out probably that almost any detectable amount is going to trigger the maximum contaminant limit. It is what's called a persistent chemical. There is not, right now, a good way to remediate it. So again, using Reese, when the base first closed, everybody heard about the groundwater contamination. That was a solvent that was in the water, and it was easily remediated by pumping the water up, going through an air scrubber, and pumping it right back down. No such treatment today exists for PFAS. The PFAS-based foams were used forever in firefighting. When it became known that there was a potential issue, Lubbock ceased to use it in town. Period, done, don't have it. We are required by federal law to continue to use it at the airport. So we are caught in a catch-22 between what we think the EPA is going to do and what the FAA makes us do. So today, if we said on our own, we're just not going to use that basis at our airport, we're no longer a commercial airport. We have to use it. I don't want us caught in a catch-22 that was created by two different branches of federal agencies. That's a long explanation, but as quick as I can make it. Questions or thoughts on that?
It's all right, it's good, thank you very much. I think that was a great explanation of the last item, which I think we all support. And I guess we'll now move on to council priorities.
Okay. Your follow-along handouts are coming down the dais right now. The one-pager is what we're going to go over on the screen. The stapled document, these are really just supplemental notes for staff that we gleaned from your prior discussion. So what you'll actually act upon is the shorter version, but we want you to know what's behind it. So as those make their way down, very similar to the legislative discussion, this is a follow-up to your council planning work session. Same thing, any changes, modifications, et cetera, we will have back to you for you to act upon on item 7.34. There are seven main categories, and in the interest of making them legible, there are going to be one category per slide, basically. Jump over and start with the first, public safety. Call out specifically to police, to fire rescue, to animal services, to code enforcement, to streets. Now, streets has safety behind it, because we've got streets and several other categories that mean something a little different. And then homelessness and vagrancy enforcement. Again, you can flip to the supplemental document, and you can see a little more detail that goes into each of those. So council, based on your discussions and your memory of what we went through in your planning session, is this where you want this category to stand, or do we need to add subtract, multiplier, divide?
Looks like we're good on that. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I just want to put this right here, because I do not want us to begin to criminalize homelessness. I understand the concern of some of the issues, and I understand that it is definitely a safety concern for the individuals who find themselves homeless, and I understand the concern for vagrancy, but I do not want those things to become meshed together so that we begin criminalizing homelessness.
Ms. Joy?
And Ms. Patterson-Harris, I think you are correct. The problem we have is that we do have ordinances, and that's the reason that we're moving towards the diversion center, which is moving in the right direction, finally, is to help alleviate some of that where they have the option on misdemeanors, which is where a lot of our homeless arrests occur. And that diversion center will allow them the option to get some help, which is what a lot of them really need. So, on the one hand, I agree with you, criminalizing and putting them in jail probably doesn't help. Now, when it comes to something more than misdemeanors, that's a different story, but I think at the same time, we have to give our police officers and our sheriff's officers the ability, if they need to, to use those enforcement procedures. So it's a catch-22, and it's a tough question.
And Mr. Mayor, I might offer a suggestion. Homelessness is not a criminal offense, and everybody knows that. I think we might get to the same spot, and that spot being, this council is telling our police department, this is a priority issue, you can take the word homelessness out and leave vagrancy enforcement. And the general series of crimes that are considered under vagrancy are irrespective of whether the offender is homeless or not. So would offer that if you want, or we can leave it as is.
Can I ask a question?
Ms. Martinez-Garcia, give me just one moment, I still see Ms. Patterson-Harris has, okay.
Okay.
You go ahead, Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
I noticed that homelessness is also listed under public health, and Sheila, would you agree that, I mean, part of it is public safety, but the other part is public health, as councilmember Joy just mentioned? Is it a matter of placement under our priorities list?
Ms. Patterson-Harris? Would you have a response, or just want to, discussion of vagrancy enforcement, removing homelessness from the public safety, but leaving homelessness as a public health issue?
I don't care where we put it. That's not my concern. My concern is that I do not want this city or the agencies connected with this city to begin making homelessness a crime, or not so much a crime, but to criminalize it, meaning the engagement with the homeless, and all of that type of thing that can happen. So, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, when we began to talk about public safety, I was not one of the ones that put homelessness or vagrancy enforcement, because as you stated, Mr. Jared, vagrancy can happen, even if you're not homeless. So I don't want us to just single homelessness out, as though that group of the community are the only ones that get involved in this. So when you attach homelessness with vagrancy enforcement, in my opinion, you begin to criminalize homelessness. And I do not want that to happen. Because the police department is going to be addressing vagrancy on its own, period. But that's not what we have here. We have homelessness, vagrancy enforcement.
All right, thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Mr. McBrer?
So would a possible solution be to distract the homelessness part from the public safety, so it's vagrancy enforcement? And remove, I'd say, remove the vagrancy from the public health, and that would be the homelessness to the diversion centers? Would that be a, I understand your concern. Of course, one of the questions that comes to my mind, what is the technical definition of a vagrant or vagrancy? And how is that different from a homeless person? Isn't a vagrant a person who is panhandling, or loitering, or things like that? Has nothing to do with whether they're homeless or not?
Correct. It is a series of generally misdemeanor crimes that in years past, you would have put under vagrancy. So it's, there's not, to my knowledge, a ticket that can be written for being a vagrant. It's for stepping in, it's for stepping into traffic. It's for accosting and panhandling individuals. It's for, I don't know how well to say it, but biological actions on somebody else's property that you should not have made.
Ms. Joy?
Well, I don't think we have any ordinances that say you can't be homeless. I don't think, we could never do that. And you'll find out that homelessness is defined differently depending on what programs you're using. So I don't think there was ever an intent, at least not on my part, to enforce that you can't be homeless, because even the federal courts tell you that a homeless person has a right to sleep on the sidewalk. They have a right to sleep. And so I don't think we ever intended it this way. I think that's taking it too far, so I would remove the homelessness reference and just leave it as vagrancy. Or just enforcing, you know, whatever ordinances we have on the books, but not, Sheila, I don't think we ever intended to try to criminalize homelessness, you can't.
And I'm not saying that we intended to. Yeah, I'm just saying.
Let's go back to, in order, Mr. Massengo?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the concept of removing and understanding homelessness and how we categorize that. I was one of the ones that suggested the term vagrant or vagrancy in our council priorities. And what my intent here is, or when I suggested it, is to protect our businesses from individuals who are clearly not patrons of those businesses, whether they're sitting on steps in front of the business, which is a deterrent to a business's clients, or whether they're threatening people that work in a business. And I think that, you know, I don't have the definite, I don't have the definition of vagrancy, but I know what I think it is. And to me, that's a public safety issue. It's a public safety issue for businesses and the people that work in the businesses.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Some of those same things also happen within the communities where people live. Some of those very same things, where you have vacant homes and all of that. So, it's not, I don't think we address it as it's directed to a particular type of building or establishment. If it's an issue, it's something that we address, but my biggest concern is that when we have it as it is now, for me, to me, I get concerned that we will begin criminalizing homelessness, so. But I mean, even with that, those are the things that the police department, or even the sheriff's department, are called to address anyway, with regards to those things happening. So.
All right, I think we're good. Mr. Atkinson, with intent, I think, is known. I believe that our priorities meeting was clear on our intent. I think it's a point of emphasis for us to pay attention to. I think we heard that from several council members, that they're hearing that from their constituents, but I think what I'm hearing is vagrancy enforcement, but overall enforcement of issues that may be dealing with downtown or businesses, as Mr. Massengo alluded to. So, anything else on public safety, other than removal of that one word? Okay. Moving on to public health?
Okay, public health, significant discussion at the planning meeting about our mobile and neighborhood services. Some good programs there, always things that we can do more and better. The diversion center, and you're going to see it, it's going to be a great tool when it's available, primarily dealing with substance abuse, mental health, and this might be where, Mayor, I suggest we strike vagrancy at the end, and it says homelessness.
Sounds like a good plan.
And council, later on your agenda today, besides these, you have a contractual step related to the diversion center. Okay, comments or move forward?
Mr. McBrer?
I have a question on the public health, on our community health centers. Are they currently still only operating on an appointment basis?
The CHCL clinics, I am not, excuse me, I'm not sure those are not city operations.
Okay.
We can have that answer for you by the time we get to council today, but I don't know.
Okay. The community health center is?
That is not a city.
It's not a city?
No, sir.
It has no city funding?
If it does, it would likely be limited only to immunization programs, but we can find that out, too.
Okay, well, that was the question that came up, an attempt to get an immunization through it, and it was by appointment only.
And anybody that needs immunizations and cannot get them elsewhere, send them to us.
Thank you.
Ms. Joy?
Looking at public health, and I was trying to kind of go down the list of things we talked about that we didn't just specifically pull out. It's become apparent, as we've worked through this diversion center, that, yes, substance abuse, mental health, and homeless people who have some issues, that there is a gap that we may want to start thinking about, and that's a community transitional health clinic. For people who don't have insurance, who've fallen through the cracks, they can't go to emergency rooms, they can't, they can't go to a health professional. And it's something, I think, that we're going to have to look at, as we talk about the diversion center and any homeless facilities. So just keep that in mind, whether we add it or not, I just want to throw it out there so that we can start thinking about it.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. All right. Fiscal discipline?
Fiscal discipline, maintain the pay-as-you-go focus that we've had for a number of years now. Management of your debt metrics and your credit ratings. We have been doing this, we've been doing it quite diligently, we've never called it out, so we have that on there. Unfunded liabilities, continue, right now, we are still in the phase of capturing those unfunded liabilities. There will be a point at which we need to move towards funding them. Expand street maintenance funding. We've had a good track record of doing that, as we said during the budget, even though we're at the most we've ever had, it's still not enough. And then employee support came up, and on the staff's standpoint, we certainly appreciate that, council. Number of things that go on in there, certainly it is stuff like your health insurance, it is the availability of mental health support, it is the program that you have already approved for us to get our employees educated and to pay for that on their behalf, would suggest that our CDL program fits in there. That has already been very successful, and it's rolling now out of solid waste because we're full, and moving into other departments where we need it. And we continue to work on the program I referenced with what we're calling the summer field internships, to encourage young people that are not college-bound, or at least not at that point, showing them the opportunities available in some other areas. Questions on fiscal discipline?
All right, thank you. Moving to community improvement?
Again, city staffing, I think, fits in here and fits well. Neighborhood planning also, which is moving forward. Infrastructure is needed. Implement the now-approved park plan, and the community trail system and Lake Seven recreational opportunities.
All right, moving to redevelopment?
Redevelopment, continue forward with the UDC. Support affordable housing efforts, remember, we have two of those that are being funded today, and we've suggested an allocation to potentially fund two more. Expansion of existing grant programs, and my notes where we were talking about small businesses. So this would be similar to what you see in the downtown and the east Lubbock programs, but on a larger geographical basis. Street maintenance is huge for redevelopment, as is downtown redevelopment.
All right. Next?
Growth and development. There was a lot of discussion about this. Staff thinks it really boiled down to a smaller number of particular items, but no doubt that there is a lot to do. Number one, proactive infrastructure development. This is trying to be ahead of things that we know are coming when we're able to do so. Certainly, the impact- Certainly, the impact fee program is going to help play into that. Council would suggest the opportunity for development agreements can help us play into that and many other things. We heard over and over core service, focus on core services, kind of catch the breath from the major civic projects and do what we need to do. Future water supply, Lake Seven. And then council, I added after the fact, as we went through this, staff dropped economic development, nowhere was it called out. So I put it back on there. Subject to your approval, of course, but I don't think we can go forward without that.
Yeah, I think that was an intention we just needed to clarify on.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, communication?
Continued growth of our social media presence and efforts. The MyLBK app, we showed you statistics to see how that is rising, it needs to continue to do so. Increase engagement with the public. And so we came up with a couple of ideas on that one. We think there's an opportunity, and we looked at this years ago, but I think there's an opportunity, and you could do it after every council meeting, to where our media staff would take one or two members at a time and say, council member District Five, talk to us about the council meeting today. Produce, in your words, the outputs of your actions and let us put them out. And then we would do the same thing with city staff as well. So think about the road bond videos that were done. The one in District Five was tremendous, there was a truck blasting through a mud hole in the background. I don't know that, I don't know if y'all planned that, but it worked very well. But I envisioned senior staff standing on the corner of 114th and Slide. Now you could move them and put them on, you know, 114th and Quaker. Hey, here is this project, here's how it was funded, here's what it's going to do, and here's when we think it's going to finish. So offer that. We heard a specific call out for Lubbock 101. And then finally, the need to continue, probably to grow, the discussion around the transition to retail electric competition. And LPNL does have assignments for that, and they have plans. I've probably done five, maybe six civic speeches in the last two months. I'm either asked up front to talk about this, or it's the first question that I get asked. The public is very interested, and we need to fill that gap.
All travelers, if any unknown person attempts to give you any item, including--
All right, does any of it, buddy, have any further questions on communication? Are we good with the priorities?
I wanted to know, under communications, Mayor?
Yes.
Is it possible to add something about our website so that we keep it? I know that they've done some updates, but, you know, so many new trends and changes that are happening, just so we make sure that it's constantly user-friendly. So maybe doing something with our website, since we're discussing communications?
Would you suggest just additional growth and?
Just some updating.
Updating or growth and refinement?
As needed.
Content?
Growth and content, growth of social media presence. I think we could safely add something there, Ms. Martinez-Garcia, and I think the intent behind that is also something you discussed. So I think we're good on the intent as well. It's a good point.
We could make that first one, say, growth of social media presence and website content.
All right, that works. Anybody have anything else? All right, it looks like we will be in recess until 12:30. We will reconvene here briefly to go into executive session. We are in recess. All right, we are back from recess. At this time, city council will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement, to have consultation with attorney under 551071 of the Texas Government Code, commercial or financial information as it relates to economic development under 551087 of the TGC, and personnel matters under Section 551074 of the TGC. It is now 12:32, and we will be in recess. All right, good afternoon. We apologize for the delay. It is 2/26/2022, and we are back in session. We will be moving into our regular agenda. Again, apologies for the delay. We will start at this time with our ceremonial items. We will start with Father Martin Pena, with Our Lady of Guadalupe Catholic Church. Father, if you would, step forward now at this time, and if you'll stand and stay, stay standing as we move into our pledges of allegiance.
Thank you. Let us pray. God have justice and mercy. Thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of the city of Lubbock. Help us weigh with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill for the needs of our citizens. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service to our city. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be leaders for your people in great need. Help us to see the humanity and the dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons, no matter how poor or weak, with reverence, respect, and with love. And finally, most merciful Father, renew us in the strength of your presence and the joy of helping build a greater and peaceful community for the city of Lubbock. We exist por Cristo nuestro señor. We exist through Christ our Lord. Amen.
If you would please remain standing and join us in our pledge to the United States and the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Good to see you, Father Pena.
All right, at this time, we will take citizen comments. Citizen comments provide an opportunity for citizens to make comments and express a position on agenda items. Any comment received that is in the nature of asking a question, we refer to the appropriate member of staff for a response. If you come forward, you'll state your name, your address, and you will have three minutes. At 30 seconds left, you'll get a lovely reminder. And at this time, we have one comment, and that's Randy Christian commenting on Agenda Item 8.3.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mayor, council. Looks a lot different from this side. I want to congratulate you all on closing the deal and officially declaring a victory on the special bond package election that was held on November. In my opinion, it was passed handily for all the right reasons, none being more important than public safety for drivers and our first responders. Well done, council. Now, if you'd be so kind, I'd like you to write down the following numbers. The first number is the number of citizens living inside the loop. The other is those living outside the loop, a mere 309 difference. I suspect a good many of those interloopers voted for the bond package for all the right reasons. One reason, it simply needed to be done and to avoid us becoming awesomes, heaven forbid. Mr. Mayor, council, now is time to give those interloopers, give all of us a new Broadway for the right reasons. Economic development, more private investment, new businesses, tourism, higher education. Create a thriving urban environment that more and more young people want to call home. More job opportunities for downtown and East Lubbock. Broadway is the backbone, the spine, the foundation for almost all downtown redevelopment, as stated in the 2019 Downtown Master Plan prepared by the Overland Group from San Antonio. But before we can move forward, this council, in my opinion, must answer the following critical question. What will the new Broadway look like? Will it be bricks, curb-to-curb, a hybrid, or something in between? With ample information, your constituents will be more than willing to give you their answers regarding hybrid or curb-to-curb. I call on you to develop now as many opportunities as possible so that citizens of all ages can share with you their thoughts, ideas, suggestions. Now that you're about to declare the street bond a winner, let's move on. Please, begin working towards an answer to the all-important question regarding Broadway. What will it look like? And develop and bring that answer to us by summer of 2023. Let's build a beautiful new Broadway, will it honor the past, embrace the present, and welcome the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll next move on with Agenda Item Six, which is minutes. 6.1 is the October 25, '22 council priorities and planning session, as well as the October 25 of '22 regular city council meeting. If I could have a motion and a second?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengo, Dr. Wilson. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by a like sign. Also, I believe, Courtney, we do not have Ms. Martinez-Garcia on with us at this time. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, just for frame of reference, Ms. Martinez-Garcia will be joining us via Zoom or FaceTime at some point when her flight that was delayed is landed. All right. All right, next, we're going to move to the consent agenda. This is items considered in routine, may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. We have 7.1 through 7.34. At this time, with council approval, I will remove Agenda Items 7.15 and 7.18 and take up 7.1 through 7.34 exclusive of 7.15 and 7.18 as a vote. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Mr. McBrier. Thank you, Ms. Joy. All in favor of approval of 7.1 through 7.34 exclusive of 7.15 and 7.18, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by a like sign? All right, those aforementioned agenda items carry 6-0, Ms. Garza. All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 7.18. This is a resolution of Public Health Services. We had an agreement, and there have been some slight modifications. Ms. Joy, I will turn it over to you on 7.18.
As many of you are aware, we have a West Texas Mental Health Collaborative that has six partners, that being the city of Lubbock, county of Lubbock, Texas Tech University, Texas Tech University Health Science Center, Star Care, and I left somebody out, and Covenant and UMC. First time we've ever, I think, in my history, anyway, gotten everybody together with the six partners, and then we have two facilitators. We have agreed to an interlocal agreement for what is called the Hope Center Steering Committee, which you've been heard before that that's a diversion center. It actually has been given a name, called the Hope Center, and will be constructed out on the property where Star Care is located. That is moving forward with architects so that we can begin building. If you will recall, $3.5 million from the city and $3.5 million from the county of Lubbock has been earmarked for the construction of that facility. So this interlocal agreement that's before you today is an agreement about purpose, the term, the responsibilities of the steering committee, how we will exchange information, and how we will go forward with construction of the diversion center or the Hope Center. It does not entail anything about maintenance and operations. This is strictly from the city perspective, it is a construction-only. We do not have any terms in here that obligate the city to anything other than our original commitment. So we had a few last-minute changes, and so you have been handed at the dais the most recent agreement for your consideration, and would ask, Mr. Mayor, that we vote to approve this local, interlocal agreement.
All right, again, council, you have the substitution item in front of you. This is a revised interlocal agreement. We have a motion for Ms. Joy to approve. Again, this is not the one that was in your information package. This is the one that's been revised with some slight changes. I would welcome a second on the motion. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. A motion and a second to approve this substituted revised interlocal agreement that is under Agenda Item 7.18 as revised. All in favor of approval of the revised interlocal agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, by a like sign? All right, motion carries 6-0. We will next move to Agenda Item 7.15, which was a consideration of a resolution establishing a voluntary substandard structure demolition grant program for the city of Lubbock. Mr. Atkinson, am I turning it over to you, or is Eric going? Eric? All right, Eric, floor is yours, sir.
Mayor, council, good to be with you. Just going to, so today you have a resolution before you to establish and really expand an existing program, the voluntary substandard structure demolition grant program. We've had a prior program adopted years ago that would address, in essence, substandard structures, but it was limited to accessory buildings and was capped at $750. The proposed program would expand to include primary dwellings up to $7,500, and the purpose behind it would be in the event that you have a property owner that, you know, say you have a sole property owner, and they agree to a demolition, instead of us going through the formal process through the Substandard Structure Commission Court, this will allow us to expedite, in those few cases, would allow us to expedite that process, get, you know, basically get consent from the property owner. It would allow us to do, basically address the demolition, address the structure, and ultimately allow us to move in a quicker manner. This would not affect anything that we have already in existence today. We would, you know, in those properties where you have a more complicated title, a more complicated ownership, those would still go through the court in the normal process. This would apply to cases that are a little simpler and would really just allow us to expedite that process and address these substandard structures, take them down quicker, and ultimately bring the properties into compliance. This is currently budgeted already in our existing program and code administration. We have $400,000 budgeted for demolitions. This would just come out of that and would simply just give the code administration department an additional tool in their toolbox to address substandard structures, and we would continue to do all the other things we do related to the substandard structures. And that's the resolution you had before you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
We have questions for Eric on this specific item. Ms. Joy.
How does this differ from the process that we use now, where we go through municipal court with substandard buildings? How does it differ?
The title search work, that's really the most extensive work. That would still continue. We would still have to verify clean title, the ownership. Where this would differ would be that it would not go through the substandard, it would not go through municipal court. Usually, when you have a court order through municipal court, there's usually a 30, 60, 90-day time period. This would eliminate that time period and allow us to go in and proceed with the demolition quicker.
So there would be no court order?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
It would strictly be someone signing an agreement, I guess, that you could demolish a structure.
Yes, ma'am.
So when you talk about delay, in the past, a lot of our delay has been because we couldn't get anybody to tear anything down. Is that right?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
When you get an order from the municipal court, it becomes effective at least 30 days after entry, correct? And at that point, you can proceed on.
Correct.
In the meantime, you can arrange to have someone tear down those structures, right? In the meantime, you can arrange to have someone tear down those structures, right?
Yes, ma'am.
When the 30 days passes. My concern is that you're doing something, one, that when we do it through the court, we can attach a lien to that property. And you're, we've been told $7,500 is about what it's costing to demolish and take out the foundations and that sort of thing. And so when you go through court, you have a court order that says, yes, you can do this, notice has been given, and we have a lien for the money that the city has expended from its budget, correct?
Correct.
On this one, you do the title work, there's no court order, correct?
Correct.
And we will have no lien on the property for the money that was expended.
In return for the property owner consenting, voluntarily consenting to demolition, in return, the city would offer no lien on the property, correct?
Okay, that's how they differ. Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, we're not, this program is not doing away with that legal process, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
We're just simply having another alternative that if we can expedite this through consent of the parties, city legal, would still do a title search. So this just is an and/or.
Correct.
If these funds aren't spent, what happens to the funds?
They're not utilized. Just like today, we're, you know, we have $400,000 if we don't utilize it for a demolition, whether it's through this program or our normal process, they're just simply not utilized.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone have any other questions for Eric on this? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, of 7.15, I have a motion on 7.15?
We do have a motion.
No, I do not.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approval of Agenda 7.15, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries five to one. All right, we'll next move to the regular agenda, which is item number eight. We'll move to board appointments. This is a consider appointments to the Electric Utilities Board under Agenda Item 8.1. We have Dan Odom, Daniel Odom, Gwendolyn Stafford, recommendations to reappoint. We have Kevin McMahon, who will be moving off of the board, and then Jane Henry will be moving off of the board. Reappoint of Gwendolyn Stafford, reappointment of Daniel Odom, appointment, recommendation of Dr. Gonzalo Ramirez, retired professor, and then a motion for Patrick Gambles, real estate instructor at South Plains College, to replace Jane Henry, and Dr. Gonzalo Ramirez to replace Kevin McMahon, and again, Daniel Odom and Gwendolyn Stafford as reappointments.
Mayor, I'd make that, I'd make that motion, as you so well recommended it.
Has this before me. All right, I have a motion to approve? Have a second?
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second by Mr. McBrayer. All in favor of approval of Patrick Gambles, Dr. Gonzalo Ramirez as new board members of the EUB, and reappointment of Daniel Odom and Gwendolyn Stafford, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by a like sign. Our motion carries 6-0. Next, we have for consideration Agenda Item 8.2. This is consideration of the appointments at the Airport Board. Mr. Massengill, I believe you, however, on the subcommittee.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to reappoint James Arnold and to appoint Grady Sharp to the Airport Board.
Grady Sharp. I have a motion and a second for reappointment of James Arnold and Grady Sharp as a replacement. We have any discussion on Agenda Item 8.2? Seeing no request for discussion, all in favor of approval of Agenda Item 8.2, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Motion carries 6-0, am I correct?
Yep, sounds like it.
All right. All right, next, we have Agenda Item 8.3. This is to consider a resolution canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the special bond election from November 8th of 2022. Ms. Garza, I will turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. Special election was held on November 8th for the, for a bond election pertaining to the issuance of general bond obligations for the city in the amount of $2 million. So I will read the final results into the record. We had 41,985 votes in favor and 20,172 votes against, for a total of 62,157 votes. This was a successful election, and I would ask you to accept the results.
200 million.
200 million, correct?
Did I say 200,000?
I think so.
Yes, 200 million. Or did I say 2 million?
We would like the approval of 200 million.
Y'all got, y'all got that approval from the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. All right, Agenda Item 8.3, all in favor of approval of Agenda Item 8.3, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by a like sign?
Mayor, if I may, I don't think we had a motion on that.
Thank you, we didn't get a motion. I thought Becky made the motion.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Massengill, for the motion. Do I have a second of approval of 8.3?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. We'll vote again. All in favor of approval of 8.3, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by a like sign? All right, 8.3 carries 6-0. Thank you for that motion, Ms. Garza. All right, next, we will have the presentation from Engineering on the implementation of the road bond. This is Agenda Item 8.4. I believe this is a dynamic duo of Eric and Mike. You gentlemen have the floor.
I will get us started and hand it off to Mr. Keenum here in a moment. Thank you, he's going to be with you once again. With the bond passing, Mr. Keenum and his team have been working to put together an implementation plan for the $200 million in bond projects that we have now, in street projects, made up of arterial streets, residential rebuilds, as well as unpaved projects. As Mr. Keenum walks us through his implementation plan that he and his team have developed, there's several things, several factors that went into account as he developed his schedule, and I want to outline a few of those, so keep those in mind as he's presenting. So the bonds will be issued in five different tranches, so the projects have been staggered as such. We also have six engineering firms that have already been pre-qualified, so work has been divided between all of them to help the products, move the products along quickly. There are some projects that will have right-of-way acquisitions, some more extensive than others, some won't have any at all, so that's been taken into account, and there are some projects as well that will have utility relocation associated with the projects. And then lastly, the last thing that Mr. Keenum took into account as he developed his schedule was also the fact that, you know, there are a limited number of general contractors. So between all those factors, Mr. Keenum has put together a really good plan, and I'm going to allow him to present that at this time. So, Mr. Keenum?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So happy to be here. This is great news for the City of Lubbock and help us to move forward, and in an ideal world, we'd build all of these in the first year, but that's not realistic, and Josh would kill me if we tried to do that. Want to say thank you to Heather Keister and the Citizens Advisory Committee for the work that they did on recommending this and helping to promote it and all the things that, obviously, as you guys just passed, it was an overwhelming success with the citizens of Lubbock, and so I think that's a great testament to, to the package that was put together, and it's kind of mixed emotions that I have this, because I'm excited for the City of Lubbock, but now my department has a ton of work to do, which is still a good thing. But we've put together a plan to, to try to address how we're going to roll this out, and I feel like it's aggressive, but it's also realistic, and so kind of wanted to step through that. You guys have seen this, this was part of the promotional information, but this is what the bond package is. The arterials, the unpaved streets, the residential rebuilds, all of that that we see. Sidebar real quick, we just opened unpaved roads CO Phase 2 today, right before this meeting started, and we had three bidders, and we came in below budget and within our budget, and so that's to the tune of about $3 million roughly. We'll be bringing the recommendation to award that contract here in the near future, but so that's outstanding that we've got that still rolling, and so that's prior to the bond package, so just wanted to make you aware of that. As you see the schedules, when this next piece of the unfazed, or unpaved roads rolls out, we've still got that other money that we're working on and getting out on the street. Here's the, the list of the projects again that y'all are familiar with. Don't want to go through all of these unless you want to be here for an hour, and I can go into gory details about each of these projects. The mayor is shaking his head no that he doesn't want me to do that. I don't think this is any surprise on what the projects are, and then we'll kind of show what we're going to do from there. So the next steps, as obviously we've just ratified the bond election, and so what's next? And so some of the things that you're going to be seeing coming before you, a reimbursement resolution, Blue and his team are working on that. I believe that's coming forward on the December 6th council meeting, and so we're moving quick, and also creating new capital projects. So all of these projects have to be created within the budget, and so there'll be a budget amendment with that. My, my team and Josh and his, his folks are working on the, the scope and justification for all of those individual projects, and so we're working on that as we speak to be able to do that. The contract with the pre-qualified firms is something we're working on, like Eric mentioned, we've got six pre-qualified firms. We're already in negotiations with, with those firms to get contracts for the design moving forward, and so you'll probably start seeing those on council meetings. Hopefully, the last meeting in December, we'll see some, and then in January, we'll see kind of the bulk of those. And so we're, we're moving quick, we've got the firms pre-qualified, and so that really helped us to slim down the timeframe that it's going to take to start getting these projects going. And then, once we get those, those contracts in place, we've got design, we've got right-of-way acquisition, and then we've got construction. A lot of these projects have significant right-of-way acquisition needs, and as we've scheduled some of these out, you'll see some of the ones that we think have significant challenges with right-of-way. We've put more time in for the design and right-of-way acquisition before we can start construction, because there's a lot that needs to be acquired on, on some of these projects. So here's, here's the fun part, and again, this is where, the way that these are set up, on the left column, this is design and right-of-way acquisition to begin in year one FY 2023, so right now. And so, and then the right column is where we anticipate construction beginning in year one. And so, yes, we do, not by the end of this calendar year, so I've already had people ask, we're going to start construction before 2022 is done? The answer is no. We, we're good, but we're not that good. And, and so, but you can see, we've got a lion's share of these projects starting in some form or fashion in year one. And so our intent is to hit the ground running, do all of these, and you can see that list there on the left-hand side of all the ones that we're going to start. And having six different pre-qualified firms working on these is really going to help us to be able to, to roll that out. And you see in the right-hand column, the construction, you know, one of the ones that's a dirt street today, 98th from Alcove to Upland. We think we can begin the design and also start construction in this first year. That's our intent, we've already talked to the consultant, we think that's realistic, it is aggressive, we, we realize, but we're only building three lanes of that, so that helps us to be able to get construction. And then the two 34th Street projects, you know, Woods team has already done the, the rebuild of the paving section, so all of these are behind back of curb. We've had those designs on the shelf for some time, and so we've got to refresh those plans, and Park Hill did those original plans, they'll do the refreshing of these, and we think we can get that done in a few months and start construction this fiscal year as well. So, so those are really the, the big, the big ones there, and then Woods team on the Dunbar Manhattan Heights will start construction of those residential rebuilds in this first year as well. So all of those construction projects, we're hoping to see start turning dirt really next year, next calendar year, which will be in this first year of the bond package. So we're, we're going to hit the ground running, and we're not going to stop for about six years. So that's, that's the plan, and these are projected, so just keep that in mind. This is the best-laid plan, sometimes go astray, but this is our plan moving forward and shifting around, and we know we've worked with Blue and his team on how the money is going to be rolled out in the tranches and to make sure that, that we keep these on pace to roll out the proper money at the proper time. In year two, we've added some additional design and right-of-way construction, and this is really going to get the, the lion's share of all the projects. So in the first two years, we're really anticipating getting all of these under contract to do design and right-of-way acquisition. And then again, you can see in year two where we anticipate those projects going under construction, so a lot of work, what you'll see on the major arterial projects is generally three to four major arterial projects per year and rolling out. And so, as Eric mentioned, the capacity of our local contractors, you know, we might get some out-of-town contractors that, that decide they want to try to mobilize and get some of these and camp out in Lubbock for six years or so. That would be fantastic, but we don't know if that's going to happen or yet, happen yet or not. But again, you see these rolling out there in year two FY '24 to, to see that construction. And, and really, in those first two years, we've hit all six of the, the council districts on having construction begin, and so that was by design that we can hit all of your, your districts, and I know Mr. McBrayer doesn't have a lot going in his district, but we do have part of 34th Street in, in year one, and so, and there's, again, all of these projects are needed in year one, and I get that, and there's just no way we can do all of them in year one with some of the needs that we mentioned. The, the third year you see there, we've got the 66th and 114th Street under design, and then the construction for two sections of Upland, 114th, and then we begin seeing construction on the residential unpaved. And so we're not pushing that one out to year three just because we don't want to do that, we've still got the other money that you guys approved, and like I said, we just opened that one for 3 million, we've still got a couple more million dollars and two more phases of that CO money that you guys had already approved to roll out. So that project is still ongoing, but the bond part, this new bond money, we've got projected into year three for construction of that, and we'll kind of roll into the design a lot within-house staff on those as soon as we finish up CO three and four. And then the last two years that we show there on construction is, this is where you get the other piece of Upland, 82nd Street, MLK, 66th and 114th there in year five there for construction, and, and I know we would have liked to have done some of those sooner, and I'll tell you straight up that 82nd Street and MLK, those are probably going to be the most challenging stretches for right-of-way acquisition, because there's a lot that we don't have, and so we think it's going to take quite a bit of time. So we're starting that project in year one, but we think it's going to take about three years to get all the right-of-way acquired in that one, and so that's, that's one of the reasons, again, we know there's a need for that, we know there's some development that's beginning to occur out in that corridor, which is fantastic. Those just, in particular, a lot of these have, but that one, those two have some of our biggest right-of-way challenges ahead, so I just wanted to point that out to make sure that we took that into account and knowing how we, we scheduled these out. So that's really, that in a nutshell, that's a lot of information really fast. This presentation is already up on the Engineering website. We've got, we've created a tab on the Engineering website for the 2022 roadway bond. This presentation is there, we'll start putting more information up there, but I know the public is going to be very interested in this project, multiple projects, over the next six-plus years, and so we're going to do what we can to make sure that the public is informed and just continually having updates with that and really trying to do what we can to make sure that the, the citizens of Lubbock know that we're not sitting on this, we're moving, and we're going to hit the ground running from day one. So we're excited for this opportunity. Josh and his team are super excited, he's already got a lot of his engineers lined out on who's managing what project, and so we're, we're already hitting the ground, we've been doing a lot of work getting ready for this, so we're, we're looking forward to it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you. I have a couple things.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may. We've, and you stated it as well, that we're going to have a lot of citizens watching this as it rolls out. Would you be so kind as to kind of explain to citizens, because they're listening, as to what design and acquisition actually refers to?
Okay, yes, ma'am. So we're going to hire engineering consulting firms to, to help us, we don't have the manpower to design all these roads, and so we'll hire different firms, some locally, some outside, all within Texas, and they're going to help us actually do the going to help us actually do the design. So create plan and profile sheets so that they can be built by the contractors. And the acquisition would be, as we're building the arterials, most of these are 110-foot that we need for right-of-way. Where we can actually build the road, build the sidewalks, the utilities behind the back of curb, we have to go acquire that property. Now, you know, some landowners may be willing to dedicate that, but we're going to do what we can to get that property so that we can build the roads. And so that's that acquisition that we're going to have teams being, going out and talking to the citizens along those corridors where we don't have the full right-of-way and seeing how we can obtain that as quickly as possible.
Thank you. And one last thing, because we've been at dealing with unpaid roads for a long time.
Yes, ma'am.
I've been here for six plus, almost seven years, so almost all of that time. And so we've been hard at it. Can you give us a quick idea as to where we are with those previous, the phases of the initial projects and then with the COs as well?
So the initial projects are completely done, are done. The CO projects, so we've got CO Phase One that's under construction right now and should be wrapping up in the spring.
Okay.
And then we've got this CO Phase Two that just bid, we opened bids today.
Okay.
So we haven't awarded that, but that'll start after the first of the year, and we'll see those again. That's $3 million, so that's going to take probably the good part of next year.
Okay.
To get those built, and then we'll roll out another package. We're still under design of Phase Three and Phase Four. All of those were kind of going on at the same time, and we combined, we divvied those out to different firms and in-house design. We combined a package to bid those, and so that's what was Phase Two. And then the next phase, we'll also combine those three different things and get a big package that'll roll out and try to use the rest of that money, the $5 million that you guys had appropriated with the CO money. And then we'll roll into this new money that was just approved in the bond package. So we're still blowing and going and knocking those out as quickly as we can.
We're slinging dirt everywhere, aren't we?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We're sure trying.
Thank you.
Ms. Joy.
Who is Josh? You keep talking about him. What's his name? What's his job?
His name is Josh Kristnik. He is the Assistant City Engineer over Capital Project and Design. Wave, Josh. He's going to be on camera.
There you go. So people will know who he is and can find him if they want to talk to you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have the right-of-way on Milwaukee from Fourth Street to the city limits?
Not all of it, no, ma'am.
Okay.
We've got some issues right there at the intersection, and we've got some other areas that that's an issue. So we're going to, so Erskine project will tie into that.
Right.
And you guys already appropriated money on that. We're about done with the design of Erskine. We've got some parcels to still acquire on that. That will tie into the Milwaukee project, and we'll build, the plan is to build the intersection and the remainder of that with the Milwaukee project because of right-of-way issues and then just the money that we have for the Erskine project. But no, ma'am, we don't have all of that right-of-way currently.
Yeah, because that project's a little bit interesting since the houses are the addition to the west along Fourth going towards Milwaukee, going towards the stop sign.
Yes, ma'am.
Is in the county.
Right.
So that's why I was wondering where we were on that. For those people who live out there and take Milwaukee a lot, and that's where Legacy Elementary is.
Yes, ma'am.
Really bad traffic situations out there, so.
Absolutely.
Looking forward to solving the safety issue.
Us too. Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. We appreciate it very much.
Absolutely.
Thanks for your presentation. Thank you, Eric. Any other questions before I let him? All right. We're next moving to public hearings. Based on, looks like we will pull 8.7 specifically on its own, and if, with council's approval, I'd like to move in 8.5 through 8.12 exclusive of 8.7. Anybody got any problems with that? Do we have Ms. Martinez Garcia back? Still no? All right. Just making sure. All right. If there's no objection from council, we'll pull 8.4, we'll move on with 8.5 through 8.12, and we'll pull that exclusive of 8.7, Kristen, so we'll do that on its own. So I guess at this time, does staff have any questions? Any questions of staff regarding any of the agenda items, 8.5 through 8.12 exclusive of 8.7? You got it in your agenda packet. Any specific questions for Kristen before I open up the public hearings? Yes, Ms. Patterson-Harris.
I don't have a specific question, but I'd like to point out the fact that 8.6 is not in the illustrious District Number Two. It is actually in District One.
We'll make that note. Anything else, action on that, Chad, we need to take as far as just a verbal change, all right, just a notation? All right, thank you. All right. Any other questions before we open the public hearings on 8.5 through 8.12? And again, if you're here on Agenda Item 8.7, what will happen next is we're going to do that at the end. And so we will do 8.5 through 8.12. I will open those up individually for those in favor and against. If no one, once you've been able to speak, then if we need to pull that out, we can. If not, we'll vote on those collectively, and then we'll move to the other agenda item. All right? Does everybody understand? All right. So at this time, I will open up the hearing on Agenda Item 8.5. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 8.5, you may come forward now. Anyone opposition of 8.5? All right, anyone wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 8.5? All right. We'll next move to 8.6. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 8.6, you may step forward now. All right. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 8.6, you may step forward now. All right. Next move to 8.8. If anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 8.8, you may step forward now. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 8.8, you may step forward now. All right. Well, next move to Agenda Item 8.9. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 8.9, you may step forward now. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 8.9, you may step forward now.
Chris Berry, 720791. I'll make it quick. I'm in favor, I'm the opponent or proponent, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chris, for being available. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of 8.9? All right. Well, next move to 8.10. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 8.10, please step forward now. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 8.10, you may step forward now. All right. Well, next move to 8.11. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 8.11 or 8.11, you may step forward Anyone wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 8.11, you may step forward now. All right. Well, next move to our final public hearing, which is 8.12. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 8.12, you may step forward now. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 8.12, you may step forward now. All right, seeing none, the public hearing for Agenda Items 8.5, 8.6, 8.8, 8.9, 8.10, 8.11, and 8.12 are now closed. Is there a motion to approve of those Agenda Items aforementioned?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Mr. McBreyer has a second. Is there any further discussion? Council have any discussion on those Agenda Items? All right, seeing none. All in favor of approval of those Agenda Items 8.5, 8.6, 8.8, 8.9, 8.10, 11, and 12? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Motion to approve carries 6-0. All right. We'll next move to Agenda Item 8.7. We'll take this one on its own. All right. The public hearing is now open for Agenda Item 8.7. If there's anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 8.7, you may step forward. When you step forward, if you'll please state your name and your address, and then you can begin. You may step forward.
It's right here. Once you open one, you can just close it out right here.
Okay.
And then minimize that, and it'll come right back here.
Thank you.
My name is Jack Stagner. I live at 2302 Slide Road, which is located directly across the street south from the proposed change in zoning. I am here to represent myself, and I also was chosen to be the, I guess you'd say, Chairman of the Committee to look into this particular zone change and see whether or not we would be for or against it. Initially, we got a map when we, when we were, a lot of the people, you see 23rd Street down there, the, where's this cursor? 23rd Street, all the ones, I'm the second one from the right, there's a big one and then two small ones. All of the people that are in that area got a notice, and we decided we need to meet and talk about it. Well, in the meantime, Gary Andrews called someone in our complex and asked that they, that he and his father meet with us, which we did on October. Well, first, I went down to, I came down to the zoning committee here, or zoning board down here, the zoning, and requested some information on it. And as I was standing there, talking to Karen Edwards, a couple of women walked out of the back, and they said something about 417A, and they said, oh, well, that's been, they've been postponed until November. This was in October. So that gave us a little leeway, and we didn't have to do something in a big hurry. So anyway, Gary called, and we set up a meeting with him on October the 18th for he and his dad to come and speak with us about this. And they did. We spent about, we have a clubhouse, which happens to be the big area on the right-hand side of the map there. Anyway, they told us what they wanted to do. Randy talked about it being his home, and they'd had it for 25 years and went into a lot of that, and they wanted to keep it in the type of area that it was, keeping the horses and this, that, and the other. And then Gary got up and started talking about what they were going to do, and his explanation to us was that he was, they were going to take the house and convert it to a office, converted into an office. And it was, that was the first thing, and then Greco would move in there, and that would be their headquarters. And it would be a, it would be, the zoning was, that they wanted was a garden office. So he talked to us about it, and we had questions from everybody in our group, and when we got through, we kind of said, well, this may not be that bad. They were doing the whole thing, but then we got another.
You can just minimize that right here. Yep. Right above it. And then you go next.
All right, okay. Get it here in a minute. This is the one that we got after that that added this section right here, because that's the reason they said that they had postponed it in the first place, because they didn't actually have that in there. And that's okay. We, at the same time, that happened on October the 24th. I got an email. I had asked for an open records, the information on open records. And then we also got this map. And this map showed a different thing. It was a totally different area from what we had expected, and in the meeting, no one can remember them actually saying that they had reduced it. They moved it over to the left, reduced it, and we were concerned about it, saying, okay, they said they were going to do one thing, now they've got something else. And we, nobody remembers them telling us that it was going to be different. Then, at the same time, we had this, and this is the, a picture of the, of the complex.
Turn it around, turn it around. I put the wrong thing. All right.
Okay, that's where it went. So what we looked at was that the blue area that starts right up here and goes across and comes down here, over and back up, and we were surprised that it wouldn't, a little bit more to the right, the east. And we just couldn't figure out why that changed. Why did they do that? Now, when Gary was talking about it, he said, this area right here, which this is the barn, everything, that right there would be the only place that they might build something. And we thought, well, you know, right there's not going to bother us. There's a big fence along here that blocks all this, but it's not, that's not the big issue. They told us repeatedly that there were three entrances to the complex. One is out here on Slide Road. The other one is right here on 23rd Street, and there's one here at the back on, I believe that's Aberdeen. Well, after we got to looking at it, I thought, you know, wait a minute. Look where this is. There is another entrance there, and if they get this approved, all they have to do is take a road and run it from there all the way up to the other road, and then they got all of this area in here that they can build garden office buildings. Now, we were told that they had 19 employees, and they said the employees will come in, and they will park, and then they'll leave at the end of the day. And the 19 number comes from my getting on the internet today and looking at their website, and there's 19 people listed there, pictures and everything. Well, it is 19, but whenever you're talking about it, 19 go in and 19 come out. So it's really 38 times that we could have our life interrupted, so to speak. And then if you talk about going to, sorry, you talk about going to garden office, this is at 10,009 Quakers. All of these properties along here are zoned office, garden office. And look at the number of cars there are in front of each one of them. So if they go through and take that area and put even one in, they're going to get six or eight additional cars. If they put in three or four, all of a sudden, we got 40 cars coming in, double that, because they're going to be coming in and going out. Then you got UPS, FedEx, all these other ones, enormous amount of, of activity. We really had a problem with this, because it just, we had discussions on it. People talked to their friends, they talked to their acquaintances, they talked to people they work with, and so many people said, you need to fight this. You don't need that in your neighborhood. Now, when we look at the next one, this is a zoning map of, from the Lubbock website, which I applaud you for everything that's available to all of us. It's just fantastic. The garden off- The garden office complexes, any, anything that's zoned off, garden office is in blue. There's one right up here, which is at Chicago and Nineteenth. And there's one way over here, which is right on the loop, on the east side of the loop, halfway between Nineteenth and Thirty-Fourth. And there's a very small one right here. I don't, I didn't even look into what that one was. But this is Marsha Sharp going along here. This is the property. If that were to be, if the zoning on that were to be changed to garden office, it would be the only garden office piece of property that would be completely surrounded by residential in the city of Lubbock. The only one, which it would seem to set a precedent for the possibility of that happening in the future. Somebody over in, in here wants to take one and do something similar. It couldn't be there, but you understand what I'm saying. Anybody could come in and say, well, we've got a precedent here. Let's, let's go and see if we can get the same thing done. The, I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I was born and grew up in Clovis. My dad was a builder. And he built about a thousand houses there. We moved to Grants, New Mexico, where he bought, built over seven hundred for the uranium miners. Grants was the uranium capital of the world at that point in time. We moved to California for a year and then came here. That's where I met my wife, and we both graduated from Monterey. We both graduated from tech. In seventy-six, we moved to Albuquerque and went into construction business with my family. And we had, we were building houses all over the place. We built four hundred houses in about three years. We had a real estate company that had thirty agents. I was a real estate broker from nineteen seventy-seven to nineteen ninety-three. I am a CPA, I still am a CPA. And I have been working with construction or commercial construction companies and real estate companies for forty years. So I know how people think. And that's why I pointed out the idea that there's a possibility, well, we don't know what they're doing. They didn't lie to us. They said they wanted to move Greco into that. That I don't have any problem with. I believe that. But then what is after that? Are they going to go in? I mean, there's, if it's garden office, they have that zoning. And there's nothing that y'all can do to, to keep them in, well, keep them in line. I guess that's not a good term. But, okay. Yesterday, I sent an email to every one of you about another zoning request that was there that we had three years ago, four years ago, in December of eighteen. This property right in here, they wanted to change it to put in a facility for people, elder, handicapped people. And so we fought that one. And the result of it was that it did not pass. That would have been the same thing. That whole area would have been covered, completely encircled on all four sides with residential. And it would have been the first one. Now we got one on the other side of us, the north of us, as opposed to south. We had, some of the people that are here today with me actually went to that board meeting and spoke. If you look at the minutes for that April the ninth, twenty-nineteen board meeting, you'll see their names on there. And most of the people that are here with me today are either on the board of the Country Place Homeowners Association, or there's a couple of us that are former board members. And this is a quiet, serene, forty-five unit complex. We don't have any problems. We have very little traffic. But the traffic on Twenty-third Street is a lot more than what you think it would be. And we just don't think that that's something that we need to add to. This is where we live. Most of us plan to die there. Not soon, I hope. But it's, it's just something that we, we don't want that in our neighborhood. It's a business, and we don't want a business in our neighborhood. I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Stagner. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition of agenda item eight point seven?
Good afternoon. Talk that down a little bit. My name is Sue Stagner. I'm related to the guy that just spoke to you. And I am here to also oppose this zoning change. I have with me today a letter that was sent to you by one of our residents. She asked if I could bring it. It did go to you in your email, nine forty-five this morning. I don't know whether you've had time to read it. But she asked if I would share it with you. And since it has many of the same sentiments that we all feel, I would like to do that. She, she put a little, she sent a copy of it to us. And then she said at the top, she said, I wish I had also said that I'm forty-eight, and I plan to live here another forty years. So like most, many of our residents, there are people in their forties and fifties that all of us, the gray hairs, were sent here today because we were able to come at two o'clock on Wednesday afternoon. But the younger people are at work, but many of them have also sent letters in to planning and zoning in, in opposition to this request. So with your attention, I will get through it very quickly. She says, dear members of the Lubbock City Council, first, thank you for your service to the council and your willingness to represent the citizens of Lubbock. I'm writing to you in this letter as I am unable to physically attend the meeting today in which the zoning case four seventeen A is being reviewed. Unfortunately, the timing of the meeting conflicts with my work responsibilities. If I could be present, I would prefer to meet you and share my contents orally. With this letter instead, I am expressing my strong opposition to the rezoning request, zoning case four seventeen A, of the portion of the property located north of Twenty-third Street, west of Slide Road in the Cisco addition. I understand the request is to change from single-family district R-one to garden office district G-O. The property is immediately across the street from the place that I have chosen to call home. The front windows of my upstairs bedrooms look out onto the property in question. I purchased this home as a single woman with a desire to live in a home where I would feel safe and secure, in a home where my privacy could be ensured. While my household has now expanded, I maintain the same desire for safety, security, and above all, privacy. Should any portion of the property be converted to a garden office zone, this privacy could be compromised. A garden office zone allows for business activity and opens our neighborhood door to people who do not share the same level of commitment to the neighborhood that permanent residents and homeowners have. The plans that have been shared with Country Place homeowners by the household requesting the zoning, rezoning, indicate that they plan to use the residential property as their business headquarters. They indicated that their business is small, eighteen to twenty employees. To me, the size of the business is not relevant. Any business activity embedded within a purely residential neighborhood means that individuals will be coming and going on a fleeting basis. Such individuals who are not permanent residents have little to no investment in the neighborhood, regardless of how upstanding they might be as individuals or how committed they might be to their company. Furthermore, at some point, employees inevitably turn over as they leave to take on new professional paths or move into retirement. This simply extends into perpetuity the transitory nature of the comings and goings to and from a business property. Rezoning this property into garden office zone with the potential for business activity will permanently alter the one hundred percent residential character of our neighborhood. I draw your attention to the fact that prior to the hearing of the zoning commission on the fourth of November, numerous letters opposing this change were sent to the commission. And opposition was also expressed by homeowners who were able to attend the meeting. In short, rezoning this property into garden office district would be an unwelcome change for many residents in our neighborhood. Should this rezoning, this current rezoning request be approved, this change would benefit one single household and their business. Yet it has the potential to negatively affect, impact the quality of living for scores of residents in the neighborhood. I implore you to consider whose interests you value and represent as you are making your decision about this rezoning request, one household and their business, or many households and their quality of living. Sincerely, yours, Kristin Michelson. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Stagner. And the author of the letter, Kristin... Michelson. All right. Anyone else here to speak in opposition to agenda item eight point seven? Okay, now we'll next open it up to those that wish to speak in favor of agenda item eight point one seven. You may come forward. Please state your name, your address, and you may pitch your case.
Good afternoon, counsel. Mr. Merritt, I appreciate you allowing us to present today. Gary Andrews, forty-seven oh-one Twenty-first Street. First and foremost, and I stated this at the zoning case as well, we respect anyone's opinion or anybody's concerns as it relates to anything that we do. I would like to clarify a few points that have been made before, before I get into our, our piece of this. First off, the, there was never a second change. There was just the first and the one that you have in your books now. There was not a second revision to the map. And specifically, I can pull this up, maybe? I can, nope, wrong one. There we go. Excuse me. And I do have, I do have this in, in this tragically too small envelope. These are just papers of the visuals that would be up here. I wasn't, I wasn't sure if everybody would have that available electronically. So let me address a few of the things, a few of the concerns that Mr. Stagner had. First off, let me address that access point. The access point that, that was referred to that's here is a remnant curb cut from an old easement that has since been abandoned, I think about thirty years ago. So that access point is not an access point. We have three access points on the property that we'll get to in a moment. The intent of the reduction that Mr. Stagner said no one had, had made them aware of, that's inaccurate during the meeting. It had already been made. We actually brought overlay maps that showed the original as well as the revision. So that was prior to the, to the homeowner meeting. The entire intent was actually to the benefit of the neighborhood for that to have been reduced from the original. So that was changed prior to the meeting. I will say, and I just do want to clarify, I one hundred percent believe that Mr. Stagner is in charge of the committee that they established. However, I was told by multiple owners within Country Place that he does not represent the entire community. So just as, just as a clarification point. I will say that Mr. Stagner does know how we think. Like he said, he knows how we think. And that is because we told him exactly what we're going to do. We have not, we've been transparent with everything that we have done to date, and we'll continue to be that way. So a lot of this that I'm about to share is going to be, is going to be review for everyone. And I do very much appreciate the council giving the time over the last couple of weeks to meet on this. But the property has been our family's property since nineteen ninety-seven. So we have had this property for twenty-five years now. And we have very much enjoyed being able to create what we have there for the neighborhood and in the neighborhood. We've been dedicated to the neighborhood for two and a half decades now. We have attempted to reach out and talk to any of the neighbors that had concerns that we were made, made aware of. Any of the letters that we did receive that came through, building and zoning, we got copies of, and we made attempts to reach out to them. And the overwhelming concern that we heard from most of the neighbors was changing the property. This is a very unique sentence to say. I'm fully aware of it. But our intent in seeking the zoning change is so that we don't have to change anything. That's the intent of the zoning change. We want to keep the property and the integrity and the character and the history of the property intact as best we can. This is the functionality by which we're able to keep it exactly what everyone has enjoyed up to date. We'll get back to that in a moment. Our intent overall is, is very much in line with the neighborhood. The neighborhood has said that the horses, it's actually hilarious. We've had several neighbors that told me the names of the horses, and I wasn't even aware of one of the names of the baby horse that I was told by one of the neighbors. So our intent is to keep the horses on site, to keep the maintenance and the landscaping and all of the green spaces that the neighborhood has enjoyed, and told us that they'd like to see remain intact. That is the intent of this, this change. The intent overall, again, is for it to remain the same as it has for twenty-five years. Okay? We do believe that the property is unique, and we believe that it is uniquely suited for the requests that we're making. The overall property, as you can see on this, is right at eight and a quarter acres. That's inclusive of, and to be clear, I want to, I want to make sure everybody understands the legend here. I tried to put as much information as we could to be able to see it. The magenta boxes are, it's not a, it's not all-inclusive, but that is all of the homes that we are aware of that are in support of us. It's not intended to be the end-all-be-all. That's just the ones that we've been made aware of. So it's mildly confusing. But that's what the magenta boxes are. The property itself encompasses both the tract that we're requesting the zoning on here as well as the green areas that we'll go over here in a moment. From a unique standpoint, we are requesting meets and bounds that are specific and, that are only specific to what we would like to do. We have intentionally, basically hamstrung the property from it being feasible for anyone to do anything other than what we're trying to do. And I'll give you some more details on that in a moment. But for the moment, what we're requesting there is, is just for our purposes, the, and we have built into our own parcel, which this is another unique feature of this, within the parcel, we have built in a four and a quarter acre R-one tract to the north of us. We've got just under an acre and a half to the west of us and right at an acre to the east of us. Building in a, an R-one buffer within the tract, even before we get to any of the adjoining tracks or the streets. This property itself, I'm going to zoom into this so we can see a little better. The blue line here is an eight-foot wall. There's an eight-foot wall that surrounds the entire property. I think this button's going to do it. It didn't. Okay, never mind. There's an eight-foot wall minimum around the entire property. It actually fluctuates slightly taller than that in sections. But there is an eight-foot wall that surrounds it. There are some views in your package of, of this condition. This is actually the wall on our side over here to the left. This over here is the Country Place wall, which is, is actually taller than ours. I think it sits right at about ten feet on their screening wall. So the property itself has a built-in wall around it on all sides. And this actually is over on the Twenty-first Street side, anyway. As was discussed, we have three points of egress, which is the case. And this, these yellow dots denote where the three points are. The, this is actually part of the property as well. We own all the way up to Slide Road. There's approximately a nine-car stack from Slide Road to the gate. So we have ample room for cars turning off of Slide. And Slide obviously has a dedicated left-hand turn lane as well. There's no increase in traffic to the neighborhood. If there was a, a entry at this gate, this gate is also recessed off the road. Right? So if, if there was a visitor of sorts at that gate, it's already off the road. But we have main entrance here from Slide Road. This third access point on the back, for all intents and purposes, is a crash gate. That would not be utilized for, for our traffic. There's really no reason for it based on where, where the critical area of our, of our office will be. So we do have three points of egress, and we do have very, very good access to those without any backup into the neighborhood. It will not affect the traffic to the neighborhood at all. We also have significant setbacks from the structures. You can see that the closest structure to our west is four hundred and eighty feet. The closest structure to the south of, of the home is in Country Place. It's a hundred and fifty feet. And that hundred and fifty feet goes through both an eight-foot and a ten-foot wall. And the closest structure to the north of us is three hundred and fifty feet. So the setbacks on the property are unique as well. And the reason that we're requesting the zoning change speaks very specifically to the uniqueness of, of the tract allowing for a unique zoning. It is the reason that it is an appropriate zoning. Over the last two months, we had, we had discussions with a lot of the neighbors. And like I said, we, we attempted to get ahold of everybody that we were at least made aware of. I think there were some, some stragglers that may have come in through a different system where we weren't made aware of them. But these are our neighbors, and these have been our neighbors for twenty-five years. Our intent has been to address... Our intent has been to address any concerns that we can. So we had conversations with them, inclusive of the HOA meeting at Country Place. We had a follow-up information package we emailed to Country Place. We had an information package that we emailed even to the north side, to the gables, which are 350 and 400 feet away from us. That is how dedicated to making sure we alleviated concerns as best we could. We actually had two neighbors that said, boy, you should've just done it. It's behind a wall. We would've never known. That actually speaks to the uniqueness of the tract. We never would've done that, by the way, but that speaks to our entire point, is that it sets up, it sets up well for what we're attempting to do. So the biggest changes, the biggest, I'm sorry, the biggest concerns that were expressed to us were changes, and more specifically, changes down the road than changes that we were doing. They were changes of what if they don't do what they say, right? So let me address some of the concerns that we believe we have addressed with the way we've submitted this. First off, a lot of the concerns dealt with changing the aesthetic of the property and the visibility. Like I said, this property here on the southwest corner is where we have had grandfathered horses. Well, we weren't there the entire time. They started, we have an aerial from 1954 that they were already on it, different horses that'd be way too old. But the horses are here on the southwest corner. That's actually a chain link there on the dotted line, and that is where the majority of the concerns, we were expecting concerns with traffic, we were expecting concerns with parking. Most of the neighbors said, we don't want to see the horses go, we don't want to see anything get changed. So this is basically the green space that the neighborhood enjoys and appreciates there, and we're proud of that. We don't want to see that change either, right? So we have left there in the R1, basically the horses have an R1 home, right there to the west of the property. So we don't intend to change the aesthetic, and anything that we did add, as Mr. Stagner pointed out, we've designed this so that we have the ability, if we need additional space, to be able to accommodate that. The aesthetic of the home and the barn is what it would look like, and I believe even in geo-zoning, the way that the code's written is that architecture is to comply as closely as possible to the surrounding residential. So our intent with anything that was an addition or an alteration would be to mimic exactly what we have there. So any alterations, we want to honor what's already there, we want to continue that history. From a signage perspective, that was another thing that was brought up, we will have no commercial signage. There will be no backlit signage. This is not intended to be a business like, I believe the examples that Mr. Stagner was showing were more professional offices, doctor, dentist, whatever the case may be, and some of those garden offices that front the street. First off, those are not behind a wall. We have a wall. I know I keep saying that. But second, if we are averaging one person a day, and I think this is very similar to how a lot of businesses have gone, we're having a really busy week. We do not have external visitors, for the most part. Mainly, everything's gone electronic, so we don't have much foot traffic at all coming to the property. So we don't need the commercial signage. As for the FedEx guy or the UPS guy, as Mr. Stagner stated, he comes to my house, too. But that's a delivery there on the 23rd Street side. Want to make sure I cover all of the concerns that we've been. We did have, we did have someone at the zoning meeting ask about the height of the structure, and that's one thing that we wanted to confirm before this meeting, because garden office does have height limitation and stories limitation. It was incorrect in the original zoning hearing. I think the gentleman said that it was a four-story structure. I don't know where the other two stories went, but this is a two-story structure. And specific to garden, to the zoning code, I believe it has a 24-foot limitation, but it has specific exception to that, and I can read this, I've got it here. I'll just, I'll read through. First, it says two stories not exceeding a total height of 24 feet, but then it goes on to say that structures that are promoted above that height, penthouse or roof structures for the housing of elevators, stairways, tanks, ventilating fans, similar equipment required to operate and maintain the building, fire and parapet walls, skylights, towers, steeples, flagpoles, chimneys, smokestacks, water tanks, and grain elevators, which we do not have any grain elevators, and we don't have any plans for that. But the ventilating fans and the mechanical to run the building that it states, that's what that, this layer here, it's a button, this layer here is an attic space and the mechanical. That's where all of the air handlers are. The cupola element does not have, and it specifically says that any of the elements wouldn't be allowed for the purposes of providing additional floor space, that attic level has a staircase, and from the landing there, it has a spiral staircase to the top. There's no additional floor space in that. So I wanted to address that because that was something that we did not have at the time of the initial zoning P&amp;Z meeting. So from a height limitation, we also have that, and we've already addressed in geo-zoning, it does require a six-foot barrier. We have more than that. We have eight to 10 feet around the property. The traffic, one of the things that was brought up, again, the staff and staff's obviously in support of this, but traffic and parking were the two things that we came up with. We've already addressed the ingress egress. The other piece of this equation is that our parking, we do not intend, any parking field, any parking lighting, anything to that extent that's commercialized. You can see here on this aerial that there's a pod of four parking spaces here. Our intent is to replicate that in different spaces around the home, so it does not detract from the residential field. We intend to do four to six spaces in different pods to allow for ample parking, but again, to keep it as concealed as possible. There won't be any field lighting whatsoever. The sconces on the house and that kind of thing that's already there, that'll be the type of lighting we utilize. There won't be any commercial lighting used. All of our parking is completely off-street, behind the wall, period. If realistically, if there had been people parking there right now, nobody would've known the difference. It's behind an eight-foot wall. I don't know if anyone's keeping track, that is the 37th time I've said eight-foot wall. And the final thing that was raised was the idea of an additional development play, and I think in Kristin's letter, she had also said this benefits one party and one party alone. Very specifically, the thing that we can do with this property that is the least lucrative thing is to use it for our own purposes. We have been advised that if we're not going to use it for our own purposes, the most we can make off of it is if we subdivide it into 20-plus home lots or 50-plus town home lots, which it already is R1 zone. So if this had something to do with a nefarious play on our part to somehow irk money out of a property that we've owned for two and a half decades, we'd be crazy to go in and to ask for a zoning change, right? So in this instance, if it was to make more money, we already have the zoning we need. We already have the zoning we need to do a development if that was the point. However, I know there's always a concern with, you know, first off, what we say and what we're going to do, right? And I'd like to say, again, we do what we say we're going to do, and I hope that anybody that knows us and knows our company knows that to be a fact. But there's always a concern if it was ever not us, you know? Let's just take the high road and assume that we're going to do it, we're going to say we're going to do it, but someone else has this property. We believe that the way that we've submitted this artificially hamstrings the property from anyone using it for anything other than what we're attempting to do with it. First off, the garden office that we have submitted, again, has a built-in R1 buffer within the tract, right? There is nothing that you can do, there's nothing you can do anywhere but that area when it comes to garden office. I do want to draw the differentiation. There's been a lot of people that have said, commercial or business activities. This is not a commercial or business activity. This is not a play to build a shopping center. This is a very restrictive office owning that we've asked for. Second, the size of what we've done was ratcheted down, and Mr. Stagner pointed out, that was something we didn't tell them. We did, but it's been ratcheted down for a reason. It's only for the critical area that we're utilizing. If someone came in here and tried to make a garden office play on it, there's not enough land for a garden office project, and garden offices historically extremely low margin. So someone would have to come in and try to take down existing structures within that area and then build back three or four pods, which wouldn't be economically feasible for someone to do anything other than what we're doing. Anyone else that comes in to do, comes in on this property would do one of two items. They would either use it just like we're using it, or they would, they could revert it to R1 because, again, we're keeping the residential design intact. Those are the two most feasible probabilities. Sorry, the most feasible probability is if we own it and we operate it, it's going to look just like this. After that, those are the most feasible probabilities of somebody coming in after us. Realistically, we believe, and I think each of us, and Councilwoman Joy, you and I have had this conversation numerous times about appropriate zoning on appropriate tracks, we believe that the way that this has been designed, anyone who comes in and tries to utilize this as a, well, since they got it, we want blank, right? Any P&amp;Z, any council is going to look at this and go, this is a very unique situation. This is a meets and bounds description within a tract, which is unique in itself, and the only reason that we do that is for it to be specific to a unique area on a unique tract. By definition, if it's specific to a unique area on a unique tract, then that means it's not directly applicable to anyone else seeking to piggyback off of that or whatever the case may be. If someone came in here, there was an outlandish concern that was an attempt to put apartments around it. Anyone who looks at this goes, there's an R1 buffer that is built in on purpose, right? If it's an inappropriate zoning on this tract or anywhere else, that is why P&amp;Z and council should shoot it down. However, this is not, appropriate zoning should never beget inappropriate zoning, period. So we believe that the way that we've requested it actually hamstrings anything from happening other than what we're attempting to do. So in summary, if I'm actually allowed to say that after however long I've been rambling, using the property for our own office and requesting this zoning change is what allows us to keep it the same as it is now and continue the 25-year history and legacy that we have on the property. So staff is in support, P&amp;Z passed at eight to one, so we respectfully request that you guys approve the zoning request. I appreciate you all having to listen to me ramble.
Thank you, Mr. Stagner.
Have you answered questions if necessary?
We may have questions, but for now, thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just in the public hearing portion. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor may step forward.
Scott McDowell, I'm a resident of 1802 Bangor Avenue and also the president of Lubbock Christian University at 5601 19th Street. We own 17 properties between the property that's under consideration and Lubbock Christian University's campus. We've got the houses that you see in magenta there, the one that's immediately to the west is actually our property, 5302, I believe that is, and we, so we would be impacted by this, we're in support of this. And we feel like the Andrews family's been good neighbors to us for 25 years. We understand the concern that other people have, but we feel like they're going to continue to be good neighbors and do what they say that they're going to do. I like the idea particularly of this having the buffer zone and the fact that it's not going to be broken up into 25 or 50 parcels, and so we just wanted to be very clear that with those 17 properties, we are strongly in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. Appreciate it. All right.
Good afternoon. Raymond Richardson, 5519 28th Street in the neighborhood. Also, I've worked at Lubbock Christian for 11 years now at 5601 19th Street. I just want to say that Randy and Susan Andrews have been committed to this neighborhood for a couple decades now. They've always maintained their property in a Class A manner. It's pristine, it's nice, the best property on the block, if I can say that. It's a de facto green space with the horses, so it's a unique piece of property to have in the neighborhood, and we don't want to lose that. They take a lot of pride in their property. I'm not sure that if it was broken up into 25 or 50 tracks that those owners would take the same kind of pride that the Andrews family does. It's an iconic piece of the neighborhood. As my kids grew up, they would always want to get on their bikes and, as a family, take a trip and go see the horses. So just for me personally, it's been a place that my family has gone on our bikes to go see, and so I would love for that to continue. There's no concern about parking or space for parking because of the size of the property and the surrounding wall. LCU has had a relationship with Randy and Susan Andrews and their family for 20-plus years, and when they say they're going to do something, they're going to do what they say, and they're probably going to even do it better than what they say. We are in favor of this request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 8.7? All right, seeing none, we will now close the public hearing. Kristin, I'm going to have you available with Mr. Andrews for questions as we go into discussion. First, I would ask if there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 8.7.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Martine Scorsese. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All right, we'll move into discussion. Does anyone have any questions of Ms. Sager or Mr. Andrews, the proponent at this time? All right, seeing no wish for discussion, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Joy.
Well, you asked for questions. Don't really have any questions. This was a very large piece of property that was annexed in 1952, and it began on about 25th or 26th Street off of Slide Road and went all the way, at that time, went all the way to about 21st Street. I know, because I lived at the corner of 24th and Albany. That's where I was when I was in tech. That's where I lived. Those were very large tracks. There were families like the Tatum's, the Williamses, the Newsoms, and they were before, they were there before 1997. And if you drive down Slide Road, you'll notice that those tracks have extremely large front yards, and then they also had their very nice homes, and behind them, they owned some of that property behind them, where they also had horses at the time. And so this neighborhood has been what it is and still is. About a year ago, we, well, four years ago, I think it was when it was, we turned down the request for the assisted living facility, which was behind one of those big houses. And it was zoned R1, and the council said, no, this is an R1 place, everything is zoned that way. That is not a use under our code that would work there. So you have to kind of understand where everybody comes from on this. Now, I've heard a lot about the horses. I've heard a lot about, gee, we'd like for it to stay the way it is. That's the problem. A lot of the people who had those homes, specifically one, 2510 Slide Road, Vita Ray and Clyde Tatum, they both passed away. And so the property has changed. It changes hands, it changes owners. And I think you have to think about that, whether you've been there for 25 years or you've been there for 50 years. Things can change, and I think that's what makes this very, very difficult, is that all of us sitting here know that even though you leave a tract as R1, that doesn't mean it's going to stay R1 because you're coming in now and asking for GO. Somebody can come in and ask whatever they want to ask for. Now, whether the Andrews are involved in the future, none of us know. If someone had a bright idea that they wanted and they thought they could do a better job with this, they might, it might sell. We don't know. That's the reason zoning is so important, is so that people can rely on the zoning. I don't really care whether the horses stay, go. What I am concerned about, and let me get this pulled up again, is the fact that we are in a residential neighborhood that, as far as the eye can see, is residential and has been. There is all residential. If you start with just west of Market Street, that is residential on the south side of 19th, all the way. That is residential on the south side of 19th, all the way to Lovett Christian University. It is all residential on the east side from 19th Street, all the way down to about 28th or 9th Street. If you go across 19th Street, which is in my district, this is not in my district, but let me tell you, it doesn't matter whose district it's in, what matters is what effect it will have on zoning in the entire city of Lovett, and that's what I have to look at. But if I go across north of 19th, in my district, I'm residential all the way from the shopping center on the corner, which is the way we do things around here, all the way up to Chicago, where they build some Garden Office. And then, as you go back towards 4th Street, again, I'm residential, the Russian neighborhood, and our commercial has been put in different, on corners, that's basically how it has worked. Excuse me. So, what I'm concerned about is if we approve this particular zone change, what effect is it going to have on other requests for zone, zone changes? Now, Mr. Andrews addressed that and said, well, this is a unique project. I haven't seen any project yet that anybody didn't think was unique, and I understand what's, I understand where they're coming from. You know, this is an area of town that, that's special to me, but when I look at this, and I get, I read from this. The intent of the current R1 zoning is to promote orderly and proper development of single-family residential units, to protect established and future single-family residential developments from inharmonious and harmful land uses, and to provide a quality environment for the residents of the district and city. The intent of the proposed Garden Office zoning, what they're requesting, is to provide for quality Garden Office development through proper planning and design. The regulations are intended to produce an attractive environment, which will ensure the compatibility between offices and adjacent uses, and promote a stable environment between residential and commercial uses. There are no commercial uses anywhere near this area, absolutely none. That's what we normally use Garden Office for, is a buffer. What we're doing here, we're not buffering anything. We're, we're surrounded by residential, they're putting something in there as GO, not as a buffer, but simply as an office facility. In, in the backup, they, they said that the proposed zoning change is compatible with the surrounding area. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. Obviously, the people at Country Place don't agree with that. The future land use map designates this area for low-density residential land uses, and they go on to say, this request does not conform to the designation, though the requested zoning is appropriate next to residential land uses as a buffer district. We're not buffering anything. What we're doing is we are asking to take a residential facility, building, and make it Garden Office, so they can have their office there. That's, that's, that's the bottom line. So, whether they keep the horses, whether the people who live outside the notice area have any say in it, or, anyway, it, it really doesn't matter. For me, it's a matter of what are, are the principles that are involved, and if we approve this Garden Office in this location, we very much will see some others being requested. And then, this council, whether we're all here or not in the future, will have to talk about, well, is this one unique, is this, what, go back, why did we do the things that were done? And the only way we know that is if we go back and read all the records, and so it's very, very difficult if we can't just do what we say in our zoning. Now, it doesn't matter to me whether planning zoning approved it, whether staff approved it, if it mattered, we wouldn't be here listening today. I do not think that we can put GO in this location, given all of the circumstances that we have. And so, for those reasons, I can't vote for it. If it passes, I wish you good luck, you know, but I think it, I think it is wrong, I think it needs, you know, you can come in tomorrow and ask to, ask to change the zoning from R1 on any, any of this, you can do exactly what you've already done. And whether, you say, well, people say they'll do what they, they say they will do. That may be true, but you can't bind anybody, you can't keep anybody from coming in and asking for other changes. They can do that. They may get in there and decide that there's something else they'd like to do that might help. They can come and ask. So, I can't depend on the future, I have to look at today, so. But, thanks for all the Country Place people, thank y'all for being here, I really appreciate the people that show up at these, at these meetings. Thank you to Gary and your sisters here, and somebody else I think back there that I'm not sure. So, thanks for being here, that's what this is all about.
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you. I have a question, and whomever, whoever can answer it. I'm noticing on page 554, in the backup of the boundaries in blue of what was being requested for GO, but a few seconds ago, oh, but a few seconds ago, and I hope I'm, I know what I'm talking about, it seems that there's been some adjustment to that actual boundary.
Thank you for clarifying that. So, as advertised on the agenda and in the backup you received prior to this meeting, the request is for 2.02 acres. This morning, the applicant submitted a revised meets and bounds description, which was passed out to you at the DIAUS, reducing the acreage to 1.54 acres, which you could see on the graphic that he had on the screen earlier. So, it removes a portion of the, from the southwestern corner right here, that was in the, the request of 2.02 acres. So, it's reduced the overall boundary.
So, I guess my question to Mr. Andrews is, what caused that to happen this morning?
So, this morning, we were made aware, and, and, Mr. Weaver, I believe you can speak to this, we were made aware that Legals interpretation, two months ago when we brought this originally, we were told that the zoning change would have no effect, I'm sorry, I'm gonna talk about the horses one more time, then I promise I'm done, that it wouldn't have any effect on the grandfathering of the horses. As of this morning, Legals interpretation, I believe, was that it would actually negate the grandfathering of the horses. So, this morning, we, we had the necessity to remove that strip that is actually, it's, it's hard to see in that green, but we removed the strip that is actually, this is the barn, and this is the pasture. So, it was brought down this morning specifically because of Legals interpretation of the, on the horse grandfathering. The, which this revised one from this morning? I'm not aware. It, it just happened on the interpretation this morning. But again, it's actually bettered the position, so, I, yeah. It's, it actually puts the, anything that is, anything that was ever added, this is actually about 225 feet from the structures to that new line, so it actually betters the position. Did that answer your questions?
It did. Was there any consideration given to taking out that pasture, and just having just the residents?
It is hard to see here. Oh, you're talking about up here and to the, to the north?
Yes, sir.
So, when we, our initial, our initial look at this, and we haven't gotten deep into this, was if we need additional space, as you might imagine, the home did not have 17 bedrooms, right? So, if any additional space was needed, we didn't want to have to turn around next week and ask for that area, and that is to the north of the barn and another, and again, 220 feet away from structures, so we put that into it.
And, and that's where the, the residents are, mentioned, I think one of them mentioned earlier that the proposal was to build a building there?
Well, the, the conversation that was had, and has been had with all, all of the neighbors, is in the event that we needed additional building, that's where it would be located. That's why we drew the, the box the way that we did, and again, that would be, per the zoning, that would be in keeping with the architecture of the residence. That's why that's designed around the north side of the building.
Okay.
Any other thing else?
No, I'm, I'm good.
All right, Mr. McBrayer, I think you had your hand raised.
Sure. Would it be appropriate for me to ask Mr. Stagner at this point if this change in the presentation answers any of your concerns, or would you still be opposed to it as, as it is today?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I've, of course, it's in my district, and I've had conversations with people, and I've had emails and phone calls, some supportive, some opposing it, it's not been unanimous one way or the other. I understand Councilwoman Joy's concern about setting a precedent and putting an R, I mean, a, a Garden Office in the middle of a residential district. It's, it's, it's a tough thing for me, I've known this family for a long time, this business is a family business, it'll be a continuing family business, that's one thing. I mean, we have our principles, but we also have different facts that come in and any consideration. There'll be long-term occupiers of this, so it's a, it's a tough thing. My initial reaction to the initial presentation was obviously not in favor of it. I'm still, got problems with it even as it is, but I wanted to check with you, Mr. Stagner, before I went forward, but thank you for that, and thank you for your presentation.
All right, anybody have any other questions or any further discussion? All right, if none, I'm gonna take a vote, as opposed to going electronic, because we have Ms. Martinez Garcia, I'll just start down there at the end with votes. If you're in favor, please say aye, if you're not, please say nay, is that fine with you, Ms. Garza, since we'll do it verbally? All right, so I have a motion and a second, and all in favor will say aye, Ms. Martinez-Garcia, we'll start with you.
Aye.
If you're in favor, aye?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye?
Nay.
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 All right, motion carries four to three. And with that, I believe that takes care of our business on the 16th day in November, and we are adjourned.